All right, this is the Village of Round Lake Beach Board meeting for Monday, October 19th of 2020 at 7:01 PM. If I could, Mr. Puma, could you go over the recent amendments to the Open Meeting Act?
Yes, thank you. Due to the COVID-19 situation, the village is meeting remotely because the mayor has made a determination that in-person meetings are not practical at this time or proven because of the disaster. So, the public has been invited to participate by following the steps as the village board and the motion is to come in person with the end competitor, the village manager, finance director, president, president.
All right. As of right now, our village clerk is not signed on. And we have some technical difficulties, so that's why she's trying to get signed in. So if we can, Dave, do you want to call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Davis? Trustee Davis? Trustee Husk? Trustee Nichols?
Here.
Trustee Stout?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Here.
And again, for time, trustee Davis?
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
You've got you. Thank you, Chrissy.
Okay, I turned my headset off.
All right, if we can stand for the pledge. Let's see them to the flag.
The flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I believe we have everyone here now. If we could, then item C, approval of the agenda tonight. We get a motion? A motion by trustee Husk, a second by who?
Trustee Valdez.
Trustee Valdez, thank you. Clerk, can I have you call the roll?
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols is an aye as well.
Okay, so do I call trustee Nichols, or you consider mayor?
You will call me until another, until I step down from the trustee position as well.
Okay, thank you.
On item D, the approval of September 21st, 2020 council meetings, minutes, can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved by trustee Cleveland.
Second by trustee Stout.
First by Margie Cleveland, second by trustee Stout. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
All right, that passes as well. Thank you. Item E, approval of expenditures. Finance Director Rossi, do you want to comment?
Most of the expenditures this month are pre-standard operating bills. There are three larger ones, one of them being the Blue Cross Blue Shield bill for about $133,000. This is a monthly bill and it's pretty much on par with the prior months. The Lake County Public Works payment for sewer usage for about $285,000, directed for the residents. Also, a few expenditure of $200,000. This also is collected directly from the property tax and transferred directly over to the police action fund.
All right, we all have received this and looked over the expenditures. Can I get a motion in a second for approval of expenditures tonight?
Motion by trustee Davis?
Second by trustee Husk.
I have a motion by Davis, second by trustee Husk. Can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passed. There are no ratifications tonight. We'll move on to standing committee reports. Do we have any reports from any of the trustees? Been pretty quiet, so I don't believe we do.
Yeah.
So moving on to the mayor's report. Round Lake Area School District presentation, Finance Director Rossi, can we have you let us know who's here to talk with us today?
We have Don Mendoza and Scott Jewett from District 116 that have joined us to give us an update on strategic plan and the status of remote learning.
Thank you and welcome. You got a little background noise. Can we mute? Thank you.
Got it, Don. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Can somebody give me a thumbs up? Trustee Stout, if you can hear me? Okay, cool. And Director Rossi, is it possible for me to share my screen? Is that possible?
I believe so.
Okay, it shows that I have sharing capability. I just wanted to make sure I did, but I wanted to thank Mayor Nicholas Nichols and the rest of the trustees for allowing us to just share a little bit about what's going on in Round Lake. I'm going to actually reverse the order, if that's okay. I really want to end on a positive note. So we're actually going to start with telling you a little bit about what's going on in our schools in this COVID environment. I want to thank school board member Scott Jewett, who is here for support, and will also be helping to lead the discussion on the strategic plan. So I'm going to give it a shot here and see if I'm able to share my screen. I am. Okay. So are you able to see a colorful web page? Perfect, awesome. So what I'm actually, what I'm actually going to do is, let's see if I can do this really quick. Hold on. All right. Okay, so as you're all aware, we are in this world of COVID-19 and it's been really, really difficult. I made the decision as the superintendent at the end of July to start the year in a full remote environment, and I think shortly thereafter, many of the districts followed suit in the county. We have been in a remote environment since the beginning of the school year, and one of the things that happened toward the end of August, and we're very, very grateful, is the Health Department actually released a return-to-school dashboard. And I'm going to show you what that is in a bit, but essentially what it does is it allows the school district to filter our COVID-19 data by zip code. We were the first county in the state to have it, as I'm aware, the first health department that offered that in the county. And about 99.8% of our kids live in the 0073 zip code. Some of our neighboring communities service children in multiple communities in different zip codes, but for the purpose of what we have to deal with, it's really the zip code, 0073. So essentially, I'm going to do this really quick. I want to show you the county website. And so this is what the website does, and you can see, and I'm not going to get horribly technical for the purpose of time out of respect to everybody, but it shows county information on incidence rate, which is what you see here at the top. It also shares data specific to testing turnaround time. And then down here at the bottom, every single district in the county can filter by zip code. So if I, with a couple of button clicks, so if I click 0073, I leave Lake County, I hit apply. What you see here on these two graphs are Round Lake Area School District data with the Lake County data. Our line is the green line. The county line is the blue line. So if you look at down here, you literally hover your cursor over the point and it gives you what the data is. And for the purpose of this, the bottom chart reflects positivity rate. And so literally, as of October 15th in Round Lake, 60073, our positivity rate was over 9%. And then the incidence rate up here is probably the biggest indicator of community spread, and we are way over the threshold for being in any type of in-person learning. So this is public information. Anybody can get this data at any time. I would say what's really nice about it is typically for us, there's only a two to three day turnaround in lag time, so the data's in real time. It just got updated at about four o'clock today. So as a result of this data, we actually use this, this is our district website. We have a data dashboard, which is what you see here. And on the left are the key metrics that help us decide whether or not we should be in school. And then what we tried to do is make it intuitive. I think everybody can follow red, yellow, green. And so these are the various thresholds in the middle for each of the data points. And then off to the right here, where it says as reported on, you see anything in red is bad, obviously. So for us, two out of the three metrics, we're not hitting the threshold in Round Lake, the Round Lake, greater Round Lake area, to justify in-person learning. You may have been seeing the paper today or yesterday or in the news. And again, I will not politicize this at all. I will just say to you that the data is headed in the wrong direction. Illinois has experienced a significant spike in COVID cases positivity rate, and Lake County happens to be in Region 9 of the Illinois school, return to school, the Illinois Recovery Plan. Lake County and McHenry County are lumped together in Region 9, and I expect Tuesday or Wednesday of this week that additional mitigation will be required of Region 9. And that's more of a state thing. You'll probably hear something coming out of the governor's office, but I just wanted to share with you where we were. I'm happy to say we've been able to keep everybody employed up to this point, which is a goal, because when we do return, we need an available workforce. And if you really think about it, I mean, we just don't have teachers. We have bus drivers, food service, teachers assistants, secretaries. And between now and last week, through our mobile food distribution centers, which are our schools, we've distributed over 370,000 meals to the families of our community, which is part of the state food service program. So I just, you know, that's where we are with our COVID situation. And without naming districts, because I definitely don't want to do that, there's currently some districts in the area that have students in that will likely go to full remote. And there are other districts that we're considering opening within the next week that probably won't because of what's happening with the data. So I'm happy to answer any questions about any of that. If you have questions, I'm happy to entertain those at this time before we move on to something a little more positive, strategic planning. Mayor Nichols, any trustees, any questions?
Your chart system is actually quite easy to read, easier than some of the others I've seen, so kudos on that.
Well, yeah, I really appreciate it. And I forgot that the best part is if you look at this part of the site, you click on any of these, it gives you the status. So if I unclick, I can click here, you'll see it. And then essentially, this is the overall status. So any parent can come to this. This is actually one button click from the front of our webpage, so we made sure we didn't bury it. So it's very easy to find. So I'll go ahead and move on to strategic planning. I'm actually going to defer at the onset to Board Member Jewett. And so I, hopefully you can see our strategic planning website here, and I'll defer to Mr. Jewett on the introduction to the plan.
Yeah, so let me comment quick on the button, on the whole website in terms of return-to-school. I have four kids that have gone through the Round Lake School District, and my youngest just graduated last year. And he's in transitions, he's in special ed. And he has been, knowing that I'm on the board every time I have a meeting, he's like, are we going back to school yet? Are we going back to school yet? Are we going back? I gave him the button. So he has been trying, no, once it is green, we'll be able to go back to school now. So at least even he can go ahead and check everything. So I think you're right. It has been a really simple tool for us to use. So last year, beginning in October, pretty much a year ago, this month, the district created a brand-new three-year strategic plan. The committee included 40 individuals, consisting of our Board of Education, the administration, teachers, parents, and non-parent community members. And then our board approved a final plan, including a brand-new mission, a set of belief statements, and established goals. The plan breaks down into, you can see here, six major themes: teaching and learning, meeting the unique needs of learners, social emotional development, parent, community, and school partnerships, equity, cultural diversity, and then securing the future.
So what we tried to accomplish, and again, you know, we're not going to plow through the whole plan, but we wanted you to be aware, just as, you know, community members, that this plan literally drives our decision-making. And so we want to make sure that all of our areas are pointed in the right direction. And so, again, with the community in mind, we tried to create a fairly intuitive website that people could access the plan. I'm not going to plow through this, but I would like to show you one feature of the plan. So as Board Member Jewett said, if you look here, you have the six themes. If I click on equity, it takes you to another page where the equity work is broken into two different ways. If you're, if you like to read text, you click on the left side, it will show you the, you know, the work that we're doing this year, 2021 focused on equity. But if you are a visual learner, you can click this box, and it gives you kind of more of a graphical view of what work we're doing in equity. And you can see down for the, on the left side here, we have a legend for the reader. So the big white box is the theme, the medium-sized squares in the dark gray are the goals for the year, the goal areas, and then the smaller squares are the initiatives. So that's, and that's how the whole site is built. It's literally button click. The other thing I'd like to highlight is here, again, I'm not going to read these, but we have core values and belief statements. And I think all of you probably have been part of strategic planning processes where you, you know, you build a 20-page plan, nobody can remember what it says. So really, for us, our mission statement, we wanted to, we wanted it to be something simple that people can remember. And then core values and beliefs are just that. These are the things that we believe about all facets of schooling. So on this page, this graphic here is designed to encompass the entire plan in one graphic. And then I'm going to actually defer to Board Member Jewett regarding the parent, community, and school partnerships theme. And I'll click that button for you, Board Member Jewett. How about that?
Scott, I believe you're still muted. There you go.
Yeah, thank you. That's like the theme for 2020, right? So one, and so just to let you know, once a quarter, we actually review these and the progress of each of these segments, each of the themes, to make sure that we are on track in terms of a red, yellow, green, how we're doing in each one of these goals. So there are three goals for the year in terms of the parent, community, and school partnership theme. Thanks. And so the first one for 2021, you can read right here, is really around continuing the efforts to communicate internally and externally with the emphasis on streamlining communications, proactively sharing the district's academic and financial success, and outreach to the many diverse community groups, and transparency, which you can imagine even through, that really is highlighted through the environment that we're in now with the school and the remote learning and such. And we feel that there is great communication with the village and the school district, and we recognize that if we're going to be successful, we're going to have to continue to, for this to be an area of focus, specifically how it pertains to communication and transparency. Second goal is to continue the many effective community-school partnerships in place and seek ways to continually expand and enhance those opportunities. Can, one example would be to continue to expand some of our parent action groups, continue to leverage the success of our BPAC, our Bilingual Parent Action Congress. And those organizations continue to be great partners, and we continue to look for ways to collaborate more with additional partnerships. And the last one example tonight is to share the 2020, 2023 strategic plan with the community. And it is moving along, obviously, even through COVID. So thank you for letting us be here.
So Mayor Nichols and trustees, that pretty much is what we wanted to share. We're really just thankful that you carved out some time for us. We really know how busy you are, appreciate the time, and certainly we can answer any questions if you have, have them. And if not, we are, you know, we know you have business to conduct, so we're, you know, happy to exit the meeting.
Thank you. Do any of the trustees have any questions or comments tonight for this?
None.
What is that website that you've used?
So what you want to do, so are you talking about the dashboard or for the strategic plan?
For the strategic plan.
Yeah, so that would be the Round Lake, Round Lake District website. So you just go to the www.rlas-116.org. You're going to see a link on the front page that says about the district. You click that and you'll see strategic plan, and it'll take you to the, to the screen that was shared with the group.
Is this dashboard also available for District 41?
So the Lake County dashboard is available to anybody in the county. So I'm wondering if Superintendent Zimmer is, I'm guessing, I mean, we're all, I look at that dashboard like three times a day, feel bad saying it. The dashboard, that's all colorful with the different graphics, we just created that locally based off of the information we're getting. So the one that is specific to our website is just, I mean, anybody can access it, but the Lake County webs, you just go to the Lake County Health Department. On the beginning, at the top of the site, it says click here for the latest COVID-19 updates. If you click that, it'll take you to a data hub, and that gets you to the website for the, for the county. And you can click as many boxes as you'd like, or as few as you like, and it'll parse out the data instantly. It's really, really valuable to have.
Well, thank you very much for your.
I do want to comment. I'm quite impressed with the amount of thought that was put into communicating with the community. One other question I had, when school does eventually go into session, what is the plan if there's someone on a school bus or someone in the classroom that gets COVID?
Yeah, so just, again, it's a, it's a very nuanced thing, but we have been given guidance by the Illinois Health Department of Public Health, and there are explicit requirements that the district will adhere to, not only if somebody gets COVID, but also if you're considered a close contact. So believe it or not, if you're inside of six feet with or without a mask, for someone that gets COVID for at least 15 minutes, you have to quarantine for 14 days. So if you really think about moving kids in and out of the school system, tracking who's on which day of quarantine, it's, it's definitely going to be a challenge, but we are, it's not if, when we open, and we will at some point, we're going to follow all of the guidance to the best of our ability, but it's really an art, not a science, that part of it. Because if you think about it, kids walk out of a classroom and they happen to pass each other in the hallway, right? I mean, and so it's very, yeah, it's complex and very nuanced. It'll be a challenge, but I think we'll be able to do it.
Yeah, because I'm a parent, and I know, I think all of us here are parents and our community as well. And I know parents are really struggling on the right thing to do with their children and how it's going to change the home life and also the work life. So that's probably the biggest question I have, because I'm stuck. I'm not sure what I should do with my kids, so.
Yeah, it's an individual decision, and I think when we open, parents will still have the option of keeping their kids home if they want. I think most districts are offering that. But I think part of why there's choice is it should be an individual decision once, you know, the school district opens. I want to open more than anybody. Our kids need to be in school. It's just, right now, it's just not looking good, frankly, with kind of what the trends are. And I'm a glass-half-full person, and I'm, I'm just, I can't wait for the day that we can open the doors. So.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for sharing all this.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night. And Mayor Nichols, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on to number two on the mayor's report, the appointment of trustee Martha Abara. Martha comes to us from the Planning and Zoning Board and also the Police Foundation. I think she'll be a wonderful addition to our Board of Trustees. And if I would to explain some of the reasons why it's not taking place tonight, but on a later date, but we're going to vote on it tonight, if I could have Attorney Puma answer, give us that explanation.
Thank you. With an acting mayor, the acting mayor can decide to resign his or her office and just become the acting mayor solely. And then the acting mayor has all of the duties of the mayor in, of the position. There's going to be a delay tonight. It's strategic to allow Ms. Abara to enter the Planning and Zoning Commission through the November meeting so that the Planning and Zoning Commission can actually conduct work. And so that's why we're asking that the Board appointer, with a delay into November until after that meeting.
I believe that date's going to be the ninth, correct?
Yes.
Okay. If I, if I can, then can I get a motion in a second for the appointment of Martha Abara to trustee as I resign my position as a trustee? Starting on.
Motion by trustee Cleveland.
Second by trustee Husk.
Second by trustee Husk.
First by Marjorie Cleveland, and a second by trustee Husk. Can I have a roll call? Dana, can I have a roll call?
Sorry, I was muted. Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes then, and we'll have our new trustee in on the ninth. This point, can we go to number three, the Red Ribbon Week proclamation? Village Clerk Elsham, if we could?
Red Ribbon Week will take place during the week of the 23rd to 31st October 2020, and the Lake County Young Marines are looking for your support in issuing a proclamation as we will be actively participating in this nationally-recognized illicit drug awareness event. You can assist us in publicizing and promoting this week by issuing a proclamation. Do I have the proclamation?
It should, yeah, it should be in the board packet on the screen. There you are.
Thank you. Okay, proclamation, Red Ribbon Week 2020. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war of drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen's support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, and whereas whereas October 23rd through 31 has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now, therefore, I, Scott R. Nichols, Acting Mayor, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31 as Red Ribbon Week in the Village of Round Lake Beach, Illinois, and urge all citizens to join me in this special observance.
All right, thank you very much. As you know, no community can keep from being affected by this, so we greatly appreciate being able to be involved. Can I have a motion in a second for the proclamation?
Motion by trustee Davis.
Second by trustee Stout.
Motion by trustee Davis, second by trustee Stout. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. We'll be moving on to business. Or actually, I'm sorry, did the clerk's report, do we have a clerk's report tonight?
No, we do not.
All right, thank you. So then we will be on to business then. We do have quite a few to go through here. So on to item A, Administrator Cobain, can you give us a little information?
Yeah, item A is the ordinance appointing a director, an alternate director to the CLC Jawa, which is the agency the village belongs to that we get Lake Michigan water up from. With the resignation of Mayor Hill, we need to appoint a new director, and at the same time, we're just going to reappoint trustee Husk as the alternate director to Jawa. So tonight, we're asking that Acting Mayor Scott Nichols be appointed to replace former Mayor Hill as the director for CLC Jawa, representing the village and the Board of Directors of Jawa, and trustee Husk gets reappointed as the alternate director. These appointments are done every two years when a new board is elected, so these appointments go through April of 2020, the end of April 2021, until a new board is seated, at which time the board will have to make new appointments.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion in a second then, please?
Motion by trustee Valdez.
Second by trustee Cleveland.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Valdez, a second by trustee Cleveland. Can we call the roll, please?
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That motion passes then. We'll go on to the resolution, appointing a director and alternate director. Administrator Cobain?
Yes, this is similar to Jawa, except this is now for the solid waste agency of Lake County. This is a little different in that trustee Stout has been serving as the village director, representative to the SWALCO. We were notified that trustee Stout has a potential conflict, serving as a director because of his full-time job, which requires a new director to be appointed. The alternate director was former Mayor Hill, who we now need to appoint alternate directors. So the recommendation is to appoint Acting Mayor Nichols as the director to SWALCO, and to appoint Public Works Director Scott Hiltz and his superintendent Daryl Futt as the alternate directors. We could have multiple alternate directors to serve on SWALCO. It's important to have one of the elected officials be the director, because the elected officials are the only ones that qualify to be actually on one of the officers for SWALCO as the Board of Directors. So we're asking, and again, these appointments will last through April 30th of 2021, at which time the board will be asked to either reaffirm appointments or make new appointments. So we're asking the board to appoint Acting Mayor Nichols as the director, and the Public Works Director and Public Works Superintendent as the alternate director.
All right. If I can, then can I get a motion in a second on this, if we have no questions?
Motion by trustee Husk.
Motion by Husk.
Second by trustee Davis.
Right, trustee Davis. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
All right, that'll pass as well. Moving on to item C, motion to approve an employment agreement with the village administrator. Scott, can you, Attorney Puma, can you discuss this moment, please?
Yes, thank you. With the change to the village board, it seemed like it would be in everyone's best interest to approve an employment contract here with the longtime village administrator, David Cobain, and this is just to memorialize the terms and conditions of this employment through the end of, it will, or can approve a contract like, cannot approve a contract like this on the term of the acting mayor, so that's why it's for a short term. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask them.
Any questions at all? All right, can I have a motion in a second?
Motion by trustee Stout.
Second by trustee Cleveland.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Stout, a second by trustee Cleveland. Can we call the roll?
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye. All right, with our ayes passing, we'll go on to item D, approving the ordinance, an amendment to a special use permit for property at 1610 North Cedar Lake Road. Director Heinem, can you give us a little background?
Sure. In 2009, this property was granted a special use permit for used auto sales dealership. As part of that special use permit, part of the conditions were that any new transfer of ownership or any new owner needed to come back and amend the special use permit. Over the years, there's been several amendments to this special use, and all have been approved by the village. The property owner is going to continue to use the existing site, as is the only upgrade to the site was doing some exterior work to clean up the facade of the building, a new exterior paint color, which is in neutral of color. This property, or this was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 3rd, and they did recommend approval for a unanimous vote. And also, all the conditions that were stated in all the previous ordinances will remain in effect for this property owner.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion by trustee Davis.
Second by trustee Valdez.
All right, we have a motion by Davis, a second by trustee Valdez. Can we call the roll?
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, moving on, then that'll pass. We'll move with the resolution authorizing improvement of award contract to Burris Equipment. Director Hiltz? All right. We had this sent to us in the committee meetings. Dave, do you want to take that?
I got it.
Okay.
Click, so
Sorry about that.
This is just authorization to approve repairs beyond what we had authorized administrative. It's all budgeted. It just puts us over the limit, and it protects us for any future repairs to our equipment, up to $25,000 for this fiscal year.
As we discussed in committee meeting, do I have a motion for the repairs on the equipment with Burris Equipment Company?
Motion by trustee Cleveland.
Motion by Cleveland, trustee, second?
Trustee Stout, seconds.
Trustee Stout, and can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
All right, that'll pass as well. On to item F, the resolution authorizing improvement of award contract to Rush Power. Officer, Director Hiltz?
This is a similar item during our preventative, to our generators, we found that a transfer switch needed to be replaced. Again, it was over $6,000. That put us over the $10,000 limit. But again, it does not exceed our budget, our budget amount for this item, and we need to approve Rush Power for up to $19,000 for this fiscal year.
All right, thank you. And since we've all discussed this already, can I have a motion in a second?
Motion by trustee Husk.
Second by trustee Davis.
We have a motion by trustee Husk, a second by trustee Davis. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
All right, that one will pass on as well. We'll be moving to item G, approve a contract for Midwest Snow Solutions. Again, Director Hiltz?
Thank you again. This item is a three-year contract. Every three years, we go out to bid for our commercial snow route and some of the Meadow Green alleys. Midwest Snow Solutions is the only bidder, but compared to the last time we bid this project, they had multiple bidders. They still have a competitive rate, so they also supplied, gave us a rate for any emergency work that we would need above and beyond, just on an emergency basis. So they worked with us before, and we recommend a contract, a three-year contract with Midwest Snow Solutions for the next year.
Again, we have discussed this in committee, so if we can get a motion in a second.
Motion by trustee Stout.
Second by trustee Davis.
Motion by trustee Stout, a second by trustee Davis. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, again, that will pass on. Item I, I'm sorry, H, going to approve an award contract to Han Snow and Ice. Director Hiltz, again?
All right, we went up to bid at the same time. Just, we separated the streets to the parking lots that the village owns and needs to clear for commuters, village hall employees, and residents. We had two bidders. It was Midwest Solutions and Han. Han was the lowest bidder, and their references checked out, so we recommend a three-year contract for Han.
All right, again, we discussed this. If no questions, we'll go on to a motion in a second on this one as well?
Motion by trustee Cleveland.
We have a motion by trustee Cleveland, a second by trustee Valdez. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
All right, ayes have it. We'll move on to item I, resolution authorizing improvement of award contract to Compass Minerals. Director Hiltz, again?
All right, this item we have to approve every year. It's a state contract for our road salt. And this is a, it's the same price as last year, so we recommend a resolution to award one of our salt contracts to Compass Minerals through the state bid.
Definitely like having the same price again. So can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion by trustee Husk.
Second by trustee Cleveland.
A motion by trustee Husk, a second by trustee Cleveland. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye. That'll pass as well. Item J, resolution authorizing improvement of award contract to Morton Salt. I believe this is, just so we have a secondary as well, right? Director Hiltz?
Correct. As we discussed, we get two bids, so we can guarantee salt delivery during the winter, and the county has a joint bid, so we recommend Morton Salt, which is a little bit less than the state, but so we recommend awarding them a contract as well.
All right, for a discussion earlier, and go ahead and get a motion in a second then on Morton Salt.
Motion by trustee Stout.
Second by trustee Davis.
First by trustee Stout, second by trustee Davis. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
All right, that'll pass as well. Item K, authorizing improving award of contract to K Tech Specialty Coatings. Director Hiltz?
This is just another product that we use for snow and ice control. It's our pre-wet and de-icing material. We've used them in the past, so we're recommending an award of contract up to our budgeted amount of 20,000.
All right, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion by trustee Cleveland.
Second by trustee Stout.
Motion by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Stout. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
All right, on to item L, a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between the Round Lake School District 116 for the purchase of Rock Salt. Something we've done in the past and like to continue to do if we can, so Director Hiltz?
Yes, correct, we've done this since 2017. It's really worked out the last several years. And the Round Lake School District did reach out to us and they will approve this to, at one of their board meetings before December. So it's just an intergovernmental agreement for this year.
All right, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion by trustee Valdez.
Second by trustee Husk.
I have a motion by trustee Valdez, a second by trustee Husk. Can I have the roll call, please?
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
All right, coming closer to the end. On letter M, resolution authorizing improving award of contract to Prescient. Administrator Cobain?
Yes, this was a contract that the village entered into for an internal based on an incident that occurred at the village's lakefront. The amount we're looking to approve is $12,500. And we're looking for the board to approve the payment of the invoice.
All right. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the contract?
Motion by trustee Cleveland.
Second by trustee Stout.
Motion by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Stout. Can we have the, call the roll?
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
All right, the resolution passes as well. We are at this moment, open to public participation. Anyone from the public would like to make a comment? Do we have anyone on the phone or on computer?
Nobody's called in.
Nobody's called in.
No emails.
No emails as well? All right, well, we have no executive session tonight for probable litigation, land acquisition, executive session minutes, or personnel. No, no items on executive session items. Can I have a motion in a second for adjournment, please?
Motion by trustee Davis.
Second by trustee.
Motion by trustee Davis, the second by trustee Valdez. I want to thank you all for standing by, and we had a few technical difficulties in the beginning of the night. And this long agenda we had this evening too, so sorry we kept you so long, but thank you very much. And good night.
Good night.
Can we have a roll call for the motion in second on the adjournment?
Sure. Trustee Nichols.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
All right, ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.